At this time, I'd like everybody to stand and to offer individual prayer and form a moment. All right, thank you. I'll ask for the city attorney to have a roll call.
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Right, this time I'd like to ask if everybody's reviewed the agenda, are there any additions or deletions on the agenda? I know that we have from the city attorney, two items we need to discuss, item ten, firm force of order, some committee decisions.
Item number seven, I'd like to add to the utilities to the United Community Ministries or the community shelter, which is known by both, involving that money distribution.
Wouldn't it be just part of the discussion? I don't think it needed to be added because that's within the CARES Act, correct, city manager?
Well, we...
How we wanted to allocate it.
Right, so what this item is, is actually an appropriation of what the city council has already authorized us to do. We can discuss how to use other monies that are coming to the city, and we're prepared to do that.
Any other items?
But item seven is to vote on what we already...
That's right. An additional item, talk about the United Community Ministries, simply shelter. Any other items? Any other deletions? Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as written? Second?
Second.
All right, motion made by Councilman Joyner, seconded by Councilman Blackwell. All in favor? Let's do a roll call.
Councilman McKnight?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Walker?
Yes.
Dawtrich?
Yes.
Bullock?
And Miller?
Yes.
Thank you. Item four is the approval of the minutes of the regularly scheduled city council meeting from July 27th, 2020. Recommended action is to approve the minutes. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Councilman Knight, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Blackwell. All in favor? If you will vote on the roll.
Councilman McKnight?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Dawtrich?
Yes.
Bullock?
And Miller?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Brings us to item five, which is the community update by our city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, pro tem. First, I would like to begin my update by commending our city staff for the excellent preparation in advance of last week's tropical storm. Thankfully, our city went largely unaffected by the storm. Because of that, our Energy Resources Department was able to send crews to the Bell Haven and Washington communities to assist with restoring power to their residents. And this past Saturday, Nash County experienced a major water main break in their central Nash Water District and had to issue a public boil water notice to residences due to the drop in water pressure. Their Public Works Director, Jonathan Boone, contacted our Water Resources Department to assist with conducting bacteriological analysis to help expedite the lifting of that notice. Without our assistance, the notice would have remained in effect until this Tuesday after the Nash County Health Department completed the analysis. We were able to run the test on Saturday and provided Nash County with the results yesterday, which allowed Nash County to live the boil water notice much earlier. Nash County Border Commissioner and Chairman Robert Davis expressed his gratitude for our assistance. I appreciate the work of both departments who use their skills to help other communities in need. Due to recent weather conditions, the Rocky Mount Police Department has rescheduled its drive-through school supplies giveaway for Tuesday, August 11th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. in the parking lot here at City Hall. The giveaway is for students in grades kindergarten through fifth grade. Attendees are asked to remain in their cars. Visit our website or social media pages for further information. We are still in a pandemic, and I would like to remind you that the CDC recommends wearing cloth face coverings to help slow the spread of COVID-19. I encourage you to adhere to that recommendation and follow all other guidelines issued by the CDC. Per the council's direction, a moratorium on all utility disconnections remain in effect until further notice, and late fees will not be assessed during this time. If you need help with your bill, please contact the Business Services Center at (252) 972-1250. The OIC continues to hold COVID-19 testing sites at the Rocky Mount Event Center. Those tested will need to bring their photo ID and insurance cards. Insurance is not required for testing. Testing days are Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Registration can be performed prior to arrival by logging on to OICRMHUB.com, or you can call (252) 210-9856 for more information. Finally, it's important that you fill out and send in your 2020 census form. The census will determine funding for housing programs, schools, hospitals, economic development, and much more in our community. You can respond online, by phone, or by mail. For further information or to respond, visit 2020census.com. Thank you.
Thank you, matter manager. This brings us to the petitions received by the public. And I'd like to remind everyone that this is petitions for the public portion of our city council meeting. This is an opportunity for the public to comment, and we thank you for coming, city council, and meeting to share your views. We value all citizen input. Please be aware that signed sheets must be presented to the officer prior to the opening of petitions from the public. Any comments should be directed to the council as a whole and not to individual council members or city staff. This is your opportunity to raise a question or present a request to the council. However, in most cases, council members will not respond to public comments, but may refer a matter to the city manager or staff for follow-up. We ask that you speak from the podium in a civil, non-argumentative, and respectful manner. Give your name and address. Personal attacks have the potential to disrupt the meeting and will not be tolerated, and you will be asked to sit down or be removed from the meeting. Time will be monitored in order to give everyone an opportunity to speak, and you will have three minutes. If an organized group is present to speak on a common issue, please designate one person to present the group's comment. If your comments are in regard to an item that is the subject of a public hearing, please wait until that item has been introduced to speak. Time will also be monitored. If your comments are in regard to an evidentiary hearing, additional time may be granted. So this time I'd like to call, I can't read the first name, it's Boyd Norman. Norman is the last name.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Ms. City Manager, fellow councilman, well, not fellow councilman, but old city councilman. My name is Bob Norman. I've lived in Rocky Mount for the last 50 years. I was not born here, but as the old saying goes, I got here as fast as I could. I've enjoyed immensely my 50 years here. I was an educator in our school system as a teacher and coach, and I was a successful businessman until I retired four years ago. I'm proud of the hundreds, and I say hundreds quite literally, of the friendships I have forged with the black community since I have been in Rocky Mountain for these last 50 years. It warms my heart almost every day when one of them, one of the many, many athletes, one of the many, many students that I taught, comes up and says, "Coach, how you doing?" It just reminds me of the good times that I had with those kids back in school. I wanted to make a comment on the Black Lives Matter mural. I think as a community, we would be better off promoting unity rather than division. I know we hear that phrase an awful lot, but we don't seem to get the unity in step with what we need to be doing. Recently, there was a statute that was taken down because it offended some people. I had no problem with that. But to me, it seems like to put a mural up with the Black Lives Matter movement going on, we're simply going to add division because undoubtedly, and as selfish as it may be, undoubtedly, it's going to cause a division again. Some people are going to be offended by it. People that come by on Amtrak. This would be a perfect opportunity for the citizens of Rocky Mountain, and especially the council, to have something there that would promote Rocky Mountain as a city of unity. I think it would speak volumes to the people that travel the East Coast that would see this in a town like Rocky Mountain, who we all want to prosper, we all want to see a future of a growth, of a future of growth in this city that we are currently not experiencing. If we don't think all lives matter, you asked the young mother in Wilson, whose five-year-old son was shot in his front yard yesterday. Five years old, riding his tricycle in his front yard, a young black guy drives up, gets out of his car, walks up, shoots this young kid point-blank in the head in front of other children. He's still on the loose today.
Thank you, Mr. Norman. Time's up.
I'm sorry?
Your three minutes are up, Mr. Norman.
Well, you let Dr. Lisa Nelson speak quite a long time over her in the last meeting.
I'm asking if you would honor the three minutes, and I started the clock a little late, actually.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Norman.
I have one last, one last comment, and I will not leave until I say it.
Please, if you would, if you just enter, just...
Councilman Knight and Ms. Small Tony owe Mr. Robert Carr an apology.
Please, sir. All right, Mr. I mean, Tricia Thompson?
I'd like to oppose city council's endorsement of the Black Lives Matter for two reasons. First being, Black Lives Matter is a self-declared Marxist organization. Every council member took a solid vote to support the Constitution of the United States. Endorsing a Marxist organization is falling short of supporting the Constitution. Do sword uphold. Second, it is racist to support Black Lives Matter as it only addresses one race exclusively. There's only one way to get back on track, and that's to take race out of the way we describe everything. My government is for all of Rocky Mountain and not just one race. I'd just like to add that our constitution is the dominant ideology, not the one that Black Lives Matter is promoting. So we should honor the dominant ideology, and that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Nehemiah Smith, attorney?
I want to talk today about all lives matter. In its initial document of independence, white America talked of self-evident truths, life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. That was hypocritical at best because it was independence for white people only. Then in September of 1787, after a few failed trials, the so-called founding fathers, white men, said, "We, the people, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, secure domestic tranquility," you know, all that stuff. The second more hypocritical document called the Constitution of the United States. It should have said, "We, the white people," because in that document, black people were considered three-fifths of a person, chattel, property, slaves. So when we say Black Lives Matter and white folk hit us with all lives matter, we want so desperately to ask, since when? Where, pray tell, is that a reality? And when I bring it to your attention that America's all has never included black people, you say things like, "You need to get over it." That was so long ago. I'm not responsible for what my ancestors did. But the problem I have is that you continue to hold up the bloodstained banner of white privilege and expect me not to say or do anything. You'll kill me for allegedly selling new cigarettes, playing cowboys and Indians in the park, not resisting arrest, running away from you with no weapon, or suffering from a mental illness that has its genesis in your system. You brutalized me for more than four hundred centuries, for four centuries, and when I ask you to paint sixteen letters, three words, two spaces, an adjective, collective noun, and a verb in third-person present tense, you get your underwear in a bunch and start talking about cost. All lives matter? Again, since when?
Thank you, sir. I'd like to ask if Mr. Samuel Battle was at the podium?
Good evening. 216 Oak Street, Rocky Mountain, North Carolina. All lives matter to me. I got a baby mother, she's white, and got a son, but he's, he's white and black. So when you get to talking about this black thing, it pisses me off because my son, he's white on one side. We got a lot of people out here, kids are vibration. So you can't say Black Lives Matter all the time, you know? It just, this stuff is killing, because this stuff that's going on in DC, Chicago's not going on in Rocky Mountain, North Carolina. The police brutality and all this other stuff. People just trying to, this, this is a fair, everybody want to jump on to something, you know? All I'm trying to do is get this city back in order to the streets and everything else and talk to the guys from the street. And all these people out here is trying to get the community back. Come out 2:00, 1:00 in the morning when it's really, when it's real light. I don't see none of you up there at 1:00, 2:00 in the morning with the kids out. All these leaders and all these organizations, come on now, I'll take you out there. Ain't nothing gonna happen to you. Hear what these kids talking about 2:00, 1:00 in the morning? They'll, they'll, they'll tell you about the black lives and all of that. They don't care too much about that. The black lives really matter. Why we got 52 murders in here, unsolved murders? Why we got 19 murders last year? We ain't doing nothing about that. You know, I, this, this, you know, some people get special privilege when they come up here. They do. Some organizations can't get no funding, but other organizations get some funding. What's up? Grassroots, if people want to start organization to help their people from Brack Street, Armstrong Project Hill, Stell, Mella Brook, all the part of the community, you need to give them some help, because they're the ones that put in the footwork in this street. You know, all these other people that getting this, getting this help, it's called their dads, their huts, their titles. I got huts, I got a hunt to work, and I don't get no help. You know, this is crazy, man. You gotta give, these other people that putting in work in the streets, give them some help. We get tired of running to, running to y'all, I see y'all for help. Ain't nobody kissing nobody's butt for nothing, man. Ain't nobody gonna do that. I'm not gonna do that. The people I'm dealing with in the streets not gonna do that. If we need help, we telling you. Give us the same, the same principle, the same thing that you giving somebody else that you working with. That's what we want. We want a fair opportunity for everybody else. And like I keep saying, these police and these farmers busting their butt every day, y'all need to give us some help to pay, man. I was at, I was at the, um, at the clinic one day. It was sad, a two-year-old, a two-year-old child had COVID. And these police is out here, and these farmers out here busting their butt every day, trying to put out a fire and trying to lock people up. Maybe catch and take them back home to their kids.
Thank you, Mr. Battle. I'd like to ask Bronson Williams to the podium?
I want to say good evening to the mayor and council. I want to stand today in support of the idea of Black Lives Matter mural. The painstaking reality that we live on a soil that a suggestion of Black Lives Matter revealed such hate towards black America. Black Lives Matter, in my opinion, was not, nor is it, a us versus them, but rather the hope to create a more United States of America. I believe that this institution should, at its most deliberate speed, create a mural that makes a bold statement that black lives matter too. I want that young black boy or girl to know that their life has value. School suspensions adversely impacting students of color, educational opportunities, employment opportunities, and economic development are all indicators that we need to make swift changes in our decision-making as relates to black America. We must take, as a city, or rather be, continue to be a city, that as a leader, just as we did with the removal of the Confederate monument, and, and tell the rest of the county and our twin counties and this world that truly Rocky Mountain's a place where all lives matter, especially black lives. For my non-black friends, this is not to devalue your worth or your value, but rather to bring equity across the broad and bold America that we live in. Finally, black folks in our communities and across this nation would truly have those economic opportunities to finally cool themselves by their own bootstraps. Lastly, as I look at economic development that's taking place in our community, Rocky Mountain's still growing. I look down Wesleyan Boulevard to see a BP gas station, even in the midst of COVID, we're seeing things still happen. So obviously, Rocky Mountain is truly the center of it all. Thank you much.
I'd like to ask Maury Menjaz to the podium?
Maury Menjaz, 2220 North Wesleyan Boulevard. I really don't know what to say, except education gives people opportunity to succeed. You aren't given anything in this life. You have to earn it. I don't care what color you are. And really and truly, that Black Lives Matter, I hope it helps people who are black, but it's not helping Caucasian people. And I'm telling you, it's gonna piss us off a bunch. I worry that our city is not getting the money that it needs to do our everyday things. It seems like this council wants to spend everything that they can get. I also would like to thank our city law enforcement. I think they do an excellent job. I'm sorry there's some nuts out there that happen to wear a uniform, but there's some nuts that don't wear uniforms either that cause just as much trouble. I would also like to thank Ginger Bruce, I have no idea who she is, except she said she was a grandmother to help with the litter. I think maybe we need to concentrate on that more than painting the L.M. on a roof or near the train station. And Patricia Jones, bless her heart, I don't know who she is, but she wants to demonstrate in City Hall to show our disappointment with our city leadership. I just wish she would call me and let me know when I can be there. And why do I have to read in the paper that they ask the city for information and y'all don't give it? I mean, I guess it's the city council that's holding them up. They have to go other places to find out questions that y'all should be able to tell them? What's your problem with that? And did y'all ever think about giving some more thought to having the ask the city council, like Dear Abby, to put in our paper? Of course, if you don't want to talk to them normally, I guess you don't want to do that, but, um... And the portraits of the black young men around town? I want to know who picked them, because y'all should have jumped in and said Samuel Battle ought to have been there. That is the most honest, heartfelt man in this city, who really works and tries to do the best. He may not speak as well as some of y'all up there on the council, but by golly, his heart is in the right place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask Nathlin O'Ree to the podium?
Good afternoon, mayor, city council, city manager, and other present officials. My name is Nathlin O'Ree, and I'm a proud citizen of Rocky Mountain, North Carolina. I feel so good this week. Not only have you all well-served our city, but I think God has also smiled upon Rocky Mountain. He let a major hurricane just go right on by, and He allowed the earthquake to stop before it got to my house. Then we must be doing something right here in Rocky Mountain. And today, I got phone calls from across the city stating where food distributions were being made to our citizens. We are so proud to be alive and to be well and to be thriving. Black lives do matter. For so long, black lives have not been considered as much as they could have been, and, you know, it's just like having children. You know, sometimes you recognize the older one before you recognize the younger one, but let the younger one have some recognition also. It's a good thing to recognize your black lives in your city, and I believe they deserve it and give them the respect that they want. And please, y'all, build our new hotel before the next hurricane so I'll have somewhere to go if my house gets flooded. No one have to go all the way across to Nash County. But thank you, city council and mayor, for stepping up and doing a beautiful job. You have a job to do. Us citizens, we can come and we can talk all day and all night, but you all have the responsibility, and I'm glad that you are shouldering the responsibility so well, and I thank you for showing some unity as for our community. Thank you and keep doing a good job.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to item seven on our agenda, which is the consideration of grant project ordinance for the city administration of community development block grants and CARES Act funding. CDBG-CV appropriates $309,806 in the community development fund to provide a one-time utility payment assistance to residential customers with below an 80% annual median income. Recommended is to adopt the ordinance. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Knight, seconded by Councilman Joyner. Is there a need for discussion? Yes, Councilman Dawtrich?
I do just, I know it's going to be on the agenda coming up, but, you know, I sent an email to everyone and to the mayor and manager regarding the United Community Ministries, and I hope we're gonna have funds through the CARES Act that are either coming from either Edgecombe or Nash County that they have to provide to... that they have to provide to us that we can put towards that. So I just wanna be on the record to say that.
Additional discussion?
Yeah, question city manager didn't.
Councilman Knight.
I thought that we mentioned the last time that someone from the Community, United Community Ministry ministry came to address the council that we said we had some funds that we could provide through COVID funds and that they would be contacted. And so I think that issue has come before us, and it's good that you're bringing it up again and that hopefully we have already addressed that.
Yes, sir. Actually, what, the last time that we talked, we were not clear on the additional funds that would be coming from both counties, Edgecombe and Nash. And since that time, we have a better read on those funds. So we will be prepared to either through email to update you on where we stand with that and what the recommendation will be. I do understand that this is an urgent matter. However, there are some other concerns about how these funds will be tracked and monitored, because that is a very important part of the, uh, of the use of those funds. So Ken Hunter and Cynthia Jones will be working with the administrators for, uh, for the homeless shelter.
Are there any additional comments or conversation relative to the motion we have on the floor? This is consideration item seven.
I definitely support the spending.
Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll favorize the clerk to provide us with roll call vote.
Councilmember Knight? Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Yeah.
Walker?
Yes.
Daughtry?
Yes.
Bullock and Miller?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Item eight is consideration of authorization to apply for fiscal year 2020 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, JAG, for purchase of equipment supplies. The Nash County shares $14,019. The city shares $21,029, and no local matches required. Note, if awarded, the city share will be used to purchase replacement tasers. Recommended action is to acknowledge notification of intent to apply for and plan the use of JAG funds and authorize staff to submit grant application and authorize the mayor, city clerk, and/or appropriate staff to execute required documentation, including final application and subsequent grant agreement certifications and insurances on behalf of the city. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Daughtry, seconded by Joyner. Is there a need for discussion on this matter? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll for vote.
Councilmember Knight?
Aye.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Yeah.
Walker?
Yes.
Daughtry?
Uh, yes.
Bullock and Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item nine on our agenda is the consideration of certification of no overdue tax debts required in connections with parks and recreation to your contract with North Carolina Science Museum Grant Program. 2020 allocation is equivalent to $37,000. Recommended action is authorize the mayor and finance director to execute certificate of no overdue tax debts on behalf of the city. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Councilman Joyner, seconded by Councilman Blackwell. Is there a need for discussion on this matter?
I would like staff to clarify which taxes it is that we're asserting are not overdue.
Very well.
I think it says any, so that would mean all.
Well, so we're not talking about individual sentence taxes. We're talking about places the city owes to someone else.
Well, the city doesn't pay taxes.
Well, I'm, I'm sure we're not, but there's, there's taxes that the city, that there's not now on the tab.
Councilperson Miller, if that was not clear, do you mind repeating that?
Thank you. I said it's not city taxes that we are asserting are not overdue. Oh, we say and really that there's no sense that in the city of Rocky Mount who is owing anything over taxes.
Well, we wouldn't be able to certify that, because certain.
Well, that's my point.
I don't think that's germane to what this action is.
Well, I think that question might be maybe by clarification managers. What are we certifying as it relates to this statement? I think maybe that clarified.
I think if you read the general statute that's given here, and I'll read it for you. It does, it says that we certify that the city of Rocky Mount does not have any overdue tax debts. And the city doesn't have tax debts anyway. Correct. And so therefore, as defined by this general statute, at the federal, state, or local level, we further understand that any person who makes a false statement is in violation and guilty of a criminal offense.
So my interpretation is.
Any, any specific.
Did I clarify you, clarify it for you, sir, Councilperson Miller?
I think the statement is rather ambiguous and requiring to certify that. If we cannot owe any taxes, we don't pay any taxes, and we're not talking about taxes that people owe to the city, what is the point in certification?
Uh, we're gonna ask Ms. Stanton to perhaps speak to this issue.
Thank you. We have provided these kind of certifications in the past, and we will be certifying any types of taxes that the city does owe, such as payroll taxes. So there are some taxes that that are due, and we will be certifying anything the city owes, not the citizens, just the city.
Thank you.
Okay. With that clarification, additional clarification, is there any other discussion on this matter? Hearing none, I'll ask the city clerk if she'll call the roll and feel vote.
Councilmember Knight?
Aye.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Yeah.
Walker?
Yes.
Daughtry?
Yes.
Bullock and Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries. That brings us to item ten on the agenda, which we added for our city attorney to provide us with a Tarver Street development clarification as well as report on a legal matter.
Move to approve.
All right, I have a motion to approve the option purchase agreement addendum, which defines four different parcel numbers equating to the 1.3 acres on the 200 block of Tarver Street. I have a second, by Councilman Knight. Is there a need for discussion on this matter? Hearing none, I'll ask the city clerk if she will call the roll. You'll please vote.
Councilmember Knight?
Aye.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Yeah.
Walker?
Oh, oh, oh!
Daughtry?
Yes.
Bullock and Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries. That brings us to, brings us to the next, I'm sorry, go ahead. There's another item.
The, uh, the second item is a report on the David Wise settlement. Mr. Wise began working as the city's downtown business and community coordinator in 2019 and was terminated before the end of that year. His attorney contacted the city attorney's office alleging certain procedural irregularities with respect to Mr. Wise's termination. The claim was investigated and settlement was reached under the terms of which the city paid Mr. Wise and his attorney $7,000, and Mr. Wise executed a complete release of the city. This is a minor claim. It did not have to be approved by the city council, but it was discussed with the city council, therefore we're making the settlement public. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Which brings us to the next item, which is the confirmation of board appointments that we made at the committee at the whole meeting earlier. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Daughtry, seconded by Councilman Joyner. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask the city clerk if she will call the roll.
Councilmember Knight?
Aye.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Yeah.
Walker?
Yes.
Daughtry?
Yes, with thanks.
Bullock and Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to the next item, which is a discussion request from UCM, specifically the shelter related to funds related to COVID-19. Councilman Daughtry asked that this be added to the agenda. So I'll let you lead with whatever.
Okay, as everyone knows, or if you don't know, United Community Ministries has a community shelter. And that community shelter, and they, within that community shelter, they also have a soup kitchen. They house 25 people at a time. Currently, um, they're, the makeup is, uh, I had that here somewhere. Seven males and three females. During this COVID time, several of the people that reside there have been diagnosed with, uh, or COVID positive. Some, some are, one person's in the hospital. One has left the shelter completely. Two females are quarantined in a private office, which does have a bathroom, and one client went to dialysis treatment and did not return. This is, uh, as we all know, COVID hit everybody by surprise. And I do think that OIC is working with UCM to help them with some of the medical needs there. But they, they serve this community where others do not serve with our homeless population. They do a service, and I think it's gonna put the community in harm's way if we do not offer some money, because they do not have the money within their budget. This was not budgeted in, and they're on a slim budget as it is. So, um, I don't really know the best mode to go about making the recommendation, or do I let staff go with this, but it's timely that we get something done. You know, the big thing is they're gonna have to go and find housing elsewhere for these individuals. And again, that's not in the budget. I would go as far as saying that we do have a facility that's not being used right now that could house these individuals, and that's with the event center. So, um, I think we need, I think it's incumbent upon this leadership to do something for United Community Ministries, because they do a service for the city that others do not perform. It's incumbent.
Councilman Knight?
Um, I think it was back in March, Councilmember Blackwell and Councilman Joyner did mention about our homeless population and that we should be mindful of that. And so with the mind with that, we asked our city manager to make sure that this organization was included in whatever funding that we perhaps would get from the COVID-19 funding. And by recollection, the director or staff member came and asked for some funding, and our city manager said that we were getting other money from the Cares Act, that there would be awarded money. What you didn't say, how much they needed, and what you didn't say, if they had a location that we could perhaps help with. So I would just ask staff that they would follow up. First of all, I wanna ask the city manager that we ever follow up with United Community Ministry?
Yes, Mr. Hunter has been in conversation with the director as early, I think, as, or as late as today. So we're still working with them. But I do not recommend the event center for housing anyone at this time, particularly someone who has COVID. But we will work right along with them and see if they have a, if they have something in mind as well.
Yeah, and just get a clear direction on, on what they are asking. But I think they're asking for funding. I think it's their job to find the housing that they need for.
I think they have.
All right, let me please discuss. If you have a little traffic control would be helpful here. So Councilman Blackwell, if you don't mind, and Councilman Daughtry, I'll leave a solid hand. If you're finished, Councilman.
I, I won't finish, but. I cut him off.
You jumped to him, but I'll, I yield to Councilman Blackwell.
I thank you, sir, and I apologize for being out of order.
I forgive you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that several of us have spoken with the leadership at the homeless shelter. And to my understanding, they have leased a home and hired a full-time staff person to monitor and support the individuals that are COVID positive and segregate them by gender. So my understanding is that they have need of funding to support the expenses related to the maintenance and the lease of the home. Support for the individuals that are living there. They might have special needs in quarantine, as well as support to pay the staff person. Their philanthropy has tremendously dropped. You know, people have this money. Rocky Mount is an awfully generous community, no matter which way you look, whether it's individuals or businesses or organizations. So if they don't have money, it's because other poor folks didn't have it to give. And I don't, I didn't, I wasn't given a number, large or rich, or where you were given a number. So my, thank you. So my only, I agree, and I do feel that there is some level of expediency that we need to deal with. And I'm wondering if there's any way, while we're working with the details, because I know all of this federal dollars, they're very tightly regulated, and if you don't adhere to the, the, the I's not dotted, T's not crossed, they become loans, which have to be repaid. And I'm wondering if there's any way, which I think you said already, stated already, city manager, that we're trying to work with them to ascertain what is outstanding that we can help with, and maybe who we can talk with to maybe delay. But I'm sure if somebody's working, they gotta get paid.
Councilman Daughtry?
Thank you. Um, Councilman Blackwell, yes, I've been in contact with John Barker. And in fact, he emailed me earlier today and indicated that several more clients tested positive, as well as some staff members. And I think that's the other issue, is they have very little staff, so they're gonna go out there and hire more folks for staff. So I agree with you, Councilman Blackwell. It is time sensitive, and I do understand the sensitivity of, of giving funds. And we do want the whole people accountable. And I think just knowing some of the people on the board, personally, I think whatever we do, I think John Barker, in fact, was retired president of Providence Bank. So, but going to the figures that they, the spreadsheet that was emailed to me earlier, housing, cleaning, security, food, all the, I mean, if we funded fully, their expenses for the remainder of the year, because they have to get through and clean this, they're looking at total estimated COVID costs of $87,000. So that's, that's the issue that they're up against. And whether we fund all of it or part of it, but I do think we need to do something, because they do provide a service to this community. Because otherwise, you know, a lot of the folks, it's right there by the library. We do not want COVID-positive folks going to Brown Memorial Library.
Councilman Knight, you have something to add?
No, I was just gonna say that we just direct the city manager to continue to work with United Community Ministry and just do it expediently.
Can I get a motion to that effect? All right, thank you. Councilman Joyner? Councilman Joyner, is there, I hear a second?
Yes.
Second from Councilman Knight. Is there a need for any discussion on the, on the motion on the floor, which is really to direct staff and the city manager to investigate, move as timely as we can on the matter? And I suppose give recommendations if needed. Is there any need for discussion on that matter?
Well, that's investigate, I mean, to, to, to work towards, seeing what the need, what their needs are, and then what can we actually give with the amount that you allocate.
Okay, so the motion is?
To work along with what they already do and continue to do it and work with them.
Okay. Councilman Daughtry.
And we've discussed this, acknowledging and understanding. But it's time sensitive, so depending on the funding, do we have to give authorization to madam manager? Or are we gonna, are we gonna cap the funds at something? I guess is my question.
Hopefully she'll send us an email back and we'll just respond.
Is that, can we do that? If that's acceptable, I agree to that.
I have a motion on the floor, we have a second, if we can clarify. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask the city clerk if she'll have the roll call.
Councilmember Knight.
Aye.
Blackwell.
Yes.
Joyner. Walker.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
Bullock and Miller.
Yes.
Motion carries. There's just one other item that I have from my notes earlier, and that is if we want to discuss whether our committees can be be assumed or in as teams or some other electronic format? Is that something we want to entertain tonight or we want to defer?
I made a motion that we allow our committees to operate visually, including by conference call or Zoom.
Okay, have a motion, have a second?
I would second that.
Second from my councilperson Miller. Is there a need for discussion?
Just one point of clarification. If you would allow enough time for me to go back to the staff to determine what that is gonna mean.
The appropriate format.
Yes, as well as the kind of staff support that's gonna be necessary to set these meetings up and so forth.
So I think, would you be willing to amend the motion to, you know, direct city manager to come up with the best format, which we can allow our committees to participate virtually?
Yes, I would amend that.
Still have a second from councilperson Miller.
Yes, I accept that amendment.
All right, is there a need for discussion on that? Hearing none, I'll ask city manager, I mean, city clerk if she'll give us a roll call.
Councilmember Knight.
Aye.
Blackwell.
Yes.
Joyner.
Walker.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
Bullock and Miller.
Yes.
Motion carries. I have nothing left on my list from our, our agenda. I will entertain a motion to move. Second, motion made by Joyner, seconded by Knight. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion, meeting adjourned.